Make sure you hold on to your uh. Your fill out uh survey. Just drop it off sometimes so we don't see it.
And what it wasn't very.
I'm going to that. Usually don't have tables, tables worth of an hour. Not they're they're beast.
Normally that would not be. That's serious. We did a band up there, but then that would actually be. To call for that. There's been a lot of. But no, it's not that we don't want. We 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 don't want. Right, it's not. White enough with like health and break. Or else we were on the commercial, like in ways where you can't come in. And when it was just for that. I'm reading on that.
It's very sweet.
Oh my god, it's like.
Feel that. I don't think any of the passengers.
This had to go.
No, please pay, please pay. I'm gonna handle this chair if my head's gonna fall apart.
Both of them.
Right here.
Grow this thing and grow items. Maybe it's weird. Probably. Very, very. To grow. Size. House. So.
Good evening.
How are you?
All right, how are you doing?
Yeah.
I just said good morning.
Oh. That's a long. Done in a really long time.
I know. I love Cary Grant.
All right, thank you. Trying to see. Everybody. Okay, um. As you said, he's not going to be able to join us in Scottsdale until he might.
I have a goal and a dream. The fifth meeting ends at eight fifteen.
I like that dream.
Yeah.
Too, I say we make your dreams now.
Or maybe even eight. Do you think that's possible?
I don't think I have twenty five slides on under two minutes.
Yeah.
Slide number five.
Yeah.
And then.
Yes, and then and then cut that down to twenty.
Yeah.
We'll just do ten to twenty or five to twenty.
All right, so seven oh five, we're gonna call this meeting to order.
We're already five minutes late.
That's my fault, I'm sorry.
So. I'll I'll call out the. While we're in running.
Yeah.
Dan Briscoe here. Uh Shane Strasser.
Here.
Matthew Johnson.
He is unable to make it to join us.
And then uh Chair.
Yes. All right, thank you, can we agree to the agenda?
Yes. I make a motion to move the agenda, to accept the agenda as is.
Yeah, a link favor.
I.
Okay, very good. Report on relevant actions by town council.
I would be happy to do that. I think it would be wise to introduce. A new person over here, the town council hired a new town clerk. No, I think just tell us a little bit about yourself, excited to have you with us.
Thank you, I've been here since last minute. Um have thirty five years. As a capital and. First time in. Public government, so it's been. A learning curve. But he's great, so.
Yeah.
I'm very happy to have you here, um so I'm pretty excited about. New chapter, to be cliche, but yeah, thank you for um joining us down here in Scottsville.
Thank you.
Yes, we're very excited to meet you.
Thank you, it's awesome, and we're small, so. I come from a small town in Ohio, so five hundred people. He's five fifty.
Yes. But we had a town, we had a traffic light, so.
Um. Like that's big time, that's big time.
Yeah.
I think that's future, well, as a town council, we were excited that you were not doing fair to the commission, and we went through a process. That went through a committee, that went through different interviews, and finally we got our best one, so. Which is. All that to say, that was one thing.
Oh, hold on. I'm sorry, I didn't catch you.
Melody.
Melody?
Melody.
Melody?
Yes.
Very nice to meet you, I'm sorry, I'm Molly. What was your one thing?
Quarter. C O U R T E R.
Oh, okay. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
We also. Went and discussed and voted on one ninety Poplar Road. And we've been through this. Three units on that property. And you know, that was many conversations from us here, compared on the council to that in our last session. And we also had a conversation. Several town commissioners. They wanted to start a park committee. I'm actually thankful that they do, I used to be in charge of the park committee for a long time, and it's kind of been quiet for a few years, and so the council is. Creating one, it has nothing to do with the support Bill Eisen and. Sign that something is aligned with.
But it's more part of some rep kind of thing.
It's.
It's it's both a beautification, events, uh town design, I. I'd say when he edits created, there was a charter between him and Council Morse that they looked at, and it'll be. I think it's, you might say, still coming together, is that fair to say that?
I would say so, they're starting a, they're gonna try to do an informational session. Bill on Wednesday, I have an email if anybody's interested, but. I can just ship forward it out of convenience of the town commission, which if you hear any members, um they're just trying to formulate it together.
When we did, there were both in the past, any committee, various iterations, different leaders, I did more of a design and stuff, maybe. So this, I think, is a merger of a bunch of different ideas, but they still have to sort out exactly. But so that has a work in a big bill, would you would you say Bill has the lead on it at the moment?
Yes, absolutely, he planned that informational session for this one, so.
You have questions, you can shoot at Bill directly, and then you talk about this. What's this thing called again, a comp plan?
Yeah.
You're working on it, we talked about that also, so. Chair, or anyone who's getting questions.
I have a question.
Yes.
When is the Mexican restaurant coming? I have people asking me every week. When it's opening.
Soon, yeah, so they're signed, and then ARB this third day is going to have a sign going up for sign approval, so. It's moving as smoothly.
What is soon, like this year?
Not gonna get beyond, oh yes, yeah.
Okay, so within the next three months.
I'm not gonna yet put a, uh they're they're signed, they're working on inside, they've been working on interior, they're already doing their signs, so all the hoops they have to jump through me. Um kind of getting clear, in in honor of the Mexican restaurant, I would say it's in la tiempo de la. Gobierno. We don't get a, they just take it, we will be moving.
Oh. That's sad.
Start out bad. I actually. So what I basically said is. We hope it's fast, but it's probably slow.
I got it. Yeah.
This possibly.
Okay. Está bien.
It'll be open inside, let's say good in my head. All right, great, thank you, just just want to curiosity on the one ninety Poplar Spring Road, um. There was some conversations about. Water sewer hook up, what was the final one now, or or. I guess the concern was that they may able to leave the. Cabs, but we we said we didn't want them to be able to leave the cabs, so that was.
That's a good one, I don't recall that, do you recall that?
So I spoke with Amok County Service Authority. And it's it's a new, it's a. We had a unique situation defining first the units, but from the way they're treating it, they're treating it the same way they would treat any unit. And there's a convenient uh hookup to Amok County Service Authority right at that spot, so they have enough capacity to hook up into sewer and water. So as staff, after talking with. ACSA, um I felt pretty confident on that uh uh aspect of the project.
But it's just one hookup.
It's one hookup, but they'll split out and everything, so the staff engineer explained to me how they were gonna follow up in the same way they would follow up with three separate units.
And we, the best we understand, like I know, I think we all have the same thing we heard, is you probably would do one, and then another, and then another, it's not even, we're gonna do three at once, but. We okay three.
But at least those point, did they make it so that they couldn't be down there?
There's a, how did we say that, it's it there is, trying to remember off the top of my head the conditions I wrote down.
It's supposed to revert to by right, the right of usage, if it's not, if it's no longer being used under a special use permit plan, that's what Matthew has said to us.
Yeah, there's zoning language about how you can pull back in S U P especially that isn't being used. Um but beyond that, there was that limit of three units, and there was an understanding from ARB that it would be a model of the Lancaster, I believe, model. Uh but it was a model with a porch to fit this aesthetic site, and then um. He was in agreeance about phasing and putting an upper limit on it. Um so I felt pretty good talking to Flavana zoning, the service authority, and then getting ARB's view on it. So from the start, it felt like a a a good approach to a a unique proposal for us. Um because we we haven't had anything like that since I've been here, but I haven't been here too long.
It was kind of a. You might say very true from council opinion to our town attorney to come up with the lingo of this very.
Sparkle model RB. So that allows that hookup, um it's considered more stationary than your traditional Winnebago or RB car.
But I think her question, I didn't, I don't recall, was if we were requiring it? Or did they agree to it, which in terms of one, it's if if they left, that they couldn't be left, I can't remember how it said that.
Was it part of what was finally?
Care to murder the big mission, I haven't written down, I can't remember that, sorry.
Can you find out?
I have to run it my best.
I'd like to be any matches. That they do find out now those.
Yeah, I was going to add.
It was lame, but no.
But I answered the question somewhat.
About the Mexican restaurant?
Yeah.
No, it did not answer the question, I'm sorry, but.
Why everything has to be so vague?
All right, anything else about town council we should know? Okay, matters from the public?
We can do look to see if there are any part expense. In the interview, no one's. Boy.
No one online.
All right, thank you, um old business, continued discussion of the comprehensive plan. Um let's let's delve into that and then the business. Which is.
Which is nothing.
Yeah, so there is no new business, that's awesome, okay, so Lincoln, you're the one thing standing between us and an early exit tonight.
You have one hour.
Not someone academic. I'll be heard.
You have forty five minutes.
So we'll make it quick. Okay, so uh basically, here's what I propose we talk about, uh but we'll see on community engagement. Then we talk a little bit about. Moving forward on the complaint report itself, we were talking about institutional coordination, we've been having a lot of meetings. In that regard, and the fact about guys like that.
When did the survey conclude?
Today.
Okay, because I passed out a bunch of little. QR codes at the soccer game on Saturday, so.
Just over the last week, we got like eight uh responses in one day, so we gotta pump there. But. Well, um.
Yeah.
Basically, it's been trickling in, yes, so so far we've got one hundred and thirty nine respondents.
That's pretty good.
That's double from every verbiage that I'm up to.
Also, that's up over a different population of Scottsville, so that's a. Good survey response.
Spent a lot of efforts on those uh hard copy surveys, but we only got three of them back. We actually got four, but one was from how a town or in the surveys, because we said, I'm if you're a town resident, please respond. We toss out a half. But uh you can see the ratio of people living in town versus out of town is about one third to two thirds, and we only got four tourists. So I know we worked hard on those questions, and we had QR codes at a lot of businesses, including able stands at restaurants. It just didn't work for the tourists for some reason like that.
I think next time we need to have a a kiosk of some sort, has a computer and have it all pulled up, because you know, it's not a long thing to do.
We heard from the business roundtable this evening that communication and advertising is very important, so maybe that also relates to tourism.
I just don't think I would care if I was a tourist, you know? I mean, if I'm in a town.
Maybe for my food, I say, hey, what's this survey, might as well fill it out.
I don't know, I, yeah, I'd just be playing a game on my phone or something.
Well, I'm gonna talk to people like you, I I've talked to a lot of really, really.
I'm coming for you after the meeting. No, 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 I talk to a lot of people, I'm just saying if I were a tourist, I don't think I'd bother filling out a survey for somebody else's town, unless I like went there all the time, but if it was like. I might fill one out for Stanton, for instance, but. Other than this, we go to Stanton all the time, anyway, um.
Lincoln, like this is not on.
I just don't think it's like, I just don't think it's worth a lot of effort on our part for like four responses.
We can make note of that for the, I mean, I don't know if it deserves a place in the comprehensive plan, but if there's like a. A cheat sheet for tends to keep in mind four years down the road, knowing that we didn't get a whole lot of impact from the tourist disco round, might be something to save us some energy. Well, frankly, we don't want to have a goodie bag. What if we gave them a goodie bag? Yeah, some sticker.
Well, I mean, what I'll do, I'll email everyone the uh. The results from the survey in Excel format, so you could dive in and look at every response, and also email a PDF of the overview. So you can look at the individual responses, because I won't go over them today to save us time, and they're practically the same as what we talked last last month, it's about the same ratios, but this is. A new aspect, basically, one of the first questions we asked, what were you, what are your priorities for Scottsville? There was one, two, three, so what I did, I combined all of those answers, so these are the top three responses from people. And create this word, uh so you can see this growth and housing and kind of the priorities, okay? The town logo is where the word town was, because a lot of people wrote town needs businesses or something, so I took out the word town, just put the logo there. But you can kind of read this however you interpret it, it's it's just one piece of the whole picture that we're looking at, okay? The the bigger the word, the more popular the word was, and the smaller the word, less popular it was as a sponsor. So what new businesses are needed, so store, restaurant, restaurants, grocery. Won't go forward.
Next again.
That's a good, yeah. And concerns for Scottsville is housing, growth is a concern also. Lacking businesses. So even though you might be not be able, specifically pull out something here, you can kind of give a sense of what people's intentions are on certain dates. Well, just mentioned, um the next item is the the growth question, so this morning we had a a zoom with Thomas Jackson. Though a few of these, and they were actually quite surprised and impressed that this was such a mandate to the town, that people want. So much different types of growth, so this is all responded. And then town residents only, town residents are slightly even more proponents of growth. So the regional planning folks were quite impressed with this, their mandate. Then the second question related to this was, what type of growth? So it's really a a balanced, balanced approach, and even the other responses, they also said balanced or equal above or something. So I think this is quite a positive mandate. That has remained in the survey from the beginning.
That's gonna be nice to go to them with that. Problem.
Yeah, we can give an overview of what they told us today, um it was a short meeting, but um. Yeah, I have that on the agenda in a few minutes. Um but first, the community engagement activities, uh last Saturday, we had uh enabling the workshop. We had five folks here, uh two planning commissioners and one town council. Um and this is just my brief summary, we had an amazing scribe, just like we had an amazing scribe tonight also. But uh CD was our scribe, and you can see a picture there. Um but basically, this is just a summarization, but we have the the pages over there that we wrote on the. The sticky notes, a huge sticky notes, but you know, growth needs more than just new housing, you mentioned a lot of keywords like revitalization. Intel development, social work. Uh consider defining different growth types for different areas of town. So we thought about uptown, downtown, downtown, and then even the the new term, potentially new term Riverside came up. It's a name like Eastern Corridor, that that Highway Six. Towards Havana. That was maybe Riverside neighborhood. Uh so because maybe people are are against growth as a global term, but maybe if you start diving in, saying what about growth in uptown? At the commercial area or growth at Riverside, maybe they're open to that, but not in the historic district. So that's what a lot of feedback on Saturday we got, uh someone also mentioned that, you know, during the tire factory debate. It ju- really wasn't that people were against growth, it was that the growth be the right fit, I think that's what one person said. And um CD brought up this idea of having last words, so this was very popular, everyone very focused on the last words, just like tonight. So communication was needed, uh revitalization of the town, multifaceted, a balanced growth. Inclusive zoning, affordable housing. And then the last person was, thank you, let's continue this. Um but one. Or two other last stickaways was the town is really a retail hub, two crossroads, we need to better explain the values of the town. And then maybe using personas to talk about different. Ways of growth for different types of people, so through different discussions, we knew the second is potential for personas. So during our meeting, uh Regina Housing had came up with these silhouettes to to explain some personas, and then last couple discussions, we kind of amended personas. So this used to be a barista, now shop worker. It is the mayor, the executive director working, they draw up a little new year. Founded three, this, you know, public spirit firefighter teacher and father. And the whole idea behind this is, you know, different sizes of families, maybe from one percent to five, they get different types of housing. And uh that relates to also growth, maybe this type of housing is not available, for instance, especially to the elderly couple. If you ask, this might be pretty wealthy retirees that want to move here, they go to the wine reefs of the region, um. Then we heard that maybe we need to have a two way couple, an agriculture list, maybe someone living in the region that's working on farm or something before. So there could be more personas, uh I, in my opinion, we don't want to have too many, because that kind of fragments it, uh but if. You think we can move forward with this, it could be a really humanizing way to talk about development and other things within the company. This is just the proposal, I think several people at town council, like Ms. Morse, uh really receptive to this. Uh hearing about this personas.
So incorporating this into one of the focus groups?
Well, we did talk about it through the published groups, but actually. In the compound, when we're trying to explain different ideas, like we're talking, trying to explain uh affordable housing. We need to mention that, hey, uh. We need to consider looking at housing for a broader range of people and families. Not just single family housing that's gonna be in the northeastern town, one acre lots, for instance, but not everyone's gonna be able to afford it. How are we gonna find houses for baristas, for instance? Teachers, firefighters, do we, do we offer that type of housing in an affordable sense? So this is just one way. Of explaining to people that, hey, these, not all these needs might might not be met right now by town. How does the company in the next five, twenty years, considering all these different types of needs? Did I explain that? Well, okay. So what I suggest, we, I'll keep working along these lines, and I'll try to uh give examples of how we can factor it into the top plan, and we'll see how it goes.
Yeah.
Okay. So the next event we just had tonight, five thirty seven, was a business community roundtable, so we haven't had time to write bullet points about this, but. The event divine was the awesome scribe, and the last words, I'll just give a recap. We heard a lot about communication and cooperation between the town and the chamber of conference that's really needed. We heard that advertising is very important, if the town and the uh chamber cooperate on advertising, it could be cheaper for everyone. Several people reinforced that advertising and the working together. Town as a whole. Um talked about the river and the historic charm, uh. More of that needs to be promoted. And again, communication and coordination, that's the most important. People said that why spend money on sidewalks when maybe it'd be better to spend money on full time, purely deals with advanced communication and tourism.
Yes.
Sounds. I I like the idea of having like a visitor center, you know, and. I've never really liked it when people tried to put their stuff out on a, you know, like a little. What would you call that, a display table or something, for all of their materials that you might pick up? A map or some sort of listing of great places to go or whatever, I think. I think even if it was just a booth somewhere. That it would be great, I know we don't have anybody to do that, but I I would volunteer to do something like that. Just to kind of be there to give out information, just something a little bit more interactive.
And I I know some of these things are. Physical aspects for the complaint, or one of the questions we we're gonna talk about uh earlier tonight was. The uh does the town provide enough public spaces? For, you know, tourism, farmers markets, a great public space, social. And we basically, you know, heard that. You know, there's a family, husband and wife, or partners from Buckingham that just started a wine reef.
Yeah.
So that was great that they came, and they really acted in the chamber, even though they're not town residents, but. Especially the gentleman, he's new to town, he's fresh eyes, he was saying, oh, parking is a concern a lot, Valley Street. And I mean, we have talked about parking, it's mainly a July fourth event issue. But an interesting insight that I heard was maybe it's not really parking, maybe it's signage to direct people to parking.
Yeah.
So maybe entrance signs and signage are relatively inexpensive, I know we've heard from my ID that. Entrance sign can be quite expensive from the grant proposal, but just some simple signage could solve a problem rather than having to. Think about constructing, you know, street side parking or parking lot, right? So that that might be a recommendation to complain, like it's quite simple to so- solve potentially some bigger issues. So that that might be a recommendation to complement, it's quite simple to so- solve potentially some bigger issues, just. Directing people to park and making sure people know that the parking lot down here is a public parking lot and not private. Simple things like that. Any other things to recap from our business roundtable? Not not a lot of people came. We we asked the chamber to email out and uh Mayor Ron, you know, at least twice. So again, it's communication.
I've heard a lot of different things and um. I don't think that the word got out very well, whether that is because people don't look at their email or because they, you know. Count on their friend, tell on him on Facebook, whatever it is. Um I heard a lot of people say to me, I don't even know who you're talking. So I was really thankful that Kristen came. Um I think she was a great asset for that communication and conversation.
Yeah. Um let's see, other last words, uh historic tourism. And events are needed, you know, more events, people are missing, that's what used to happen. So again, that that might not relate to the complex specifically, but you know, previously we talked about facilities to host the A B C event, so we got. You know, the farmer's market pavilion. Seems like we have enough facilities. We're not. For our facilities, it's mainly having the person power and the coordination to to draw people to the town. So I guess that's positive from a competitive perspective. We have facilities. It's just more utilizing them and so forth. Okay. Um now I suggest we double check our engagement. This is who we engaged so far and that's. We've got a lot of individuals, we just did quite a few businesses. Uh we could do more, of course, but. Uh Tiger Fu was gonna come tonight, but he had a, you know, something come up personally. Uh he's gonna come in the future. Uh Javier and I can talk in southern Maryland home, there's a town council meeting with uh these folks soon. Uh we've done all these complications and we're gonna do more. We're gonna have a more focus group, uh engaging individual. For organizations that are, Javier, you know, the local ministers, for instance, and invite them to future events. We continue with more organizational reach out, providing focus groups. Um. Javier and I are gonna consult Buckingham County and people on Housing Alliance. And uh I know some of you have had to grab and go back to pocket farmers market and so forth. So I just wanna take a few minutes to to hear what what other things you heard. Basically, they didn't know what was going on.
Well, it'd be amazing to hear that in just that one small moment. It was um throughout the week. So but um you know, I was just feeling like, are you guys gonna come to the meeting? And what are we talking about? You know, that's really frustrating, but. I think we've had a really big communication um struggle. Would threaten to the word out about a lot of things. Um that would be really great to figure out one day. But um no, I talked to people, you know, I had the lady come and tell me, you know, about all the misinformation and she was, let me just want you to know and. It was very, very nice and I thanked her sincerely because I think that kind of feedback is really helpful, but.
What misinformation?
Oh, just um things on the website that are giving misinformation at like times or.
Actually.
You know, it's hard to keep up with all the areas that you have information.
Yeah, like a Charlottesville charity.
Yeah. We don't have anybody who's looking that over. Um so anyway. Um yeah, I've heard a lot about the turkey farm in Savannah. And I I wish them lots of luck and I, you know, I wasn't sure. Whether that would be something that came in front of their planning commission or town council. Or whether they're able to just do that.
When when we talked to Alamo County planning uh colleagues, uh they asked us if we had any concerns or heard anything of ours. And we mentioned the turkey farm, but they also said they don't have any control over that.
Yeah. Um I wasn't, but you're right, with the with the people who run businesses, it was disheartening. To have them feel a little standoffish about that. It's something that we need to solve, but it also creates a rift. And um I think this meeting tonight was really positive. Um and I think that I got good vibe. So that was good. But um yeah, I'm trying to figure out. Um it wasn't a whole lot of discussions. It was a lot of. Hey, could you, you know, fill out this survey? But I did have a couple of interesting conversations. It just wasn't like. This is what I think will bring the town together. Or, you know, this is what we should do. Um but I'd like to have the opportunity to do it more. For a lengthier period of time, but you're saying we're done with that, is that right?
For the survey.
Okay.
I mean, I I think it would be great if you continue to go out and talk to people, especially invited focus groups.
Yeah.
Um so we'll talk about the focus groups in a few minutes. And I think that's this type of personal engagement, inviting people is the best method. Rather than email and other forms of communication.
Sean, what feedback did you get? Yeah, um so I also, it was a a lot of, hey, could you please take some time to fill out the survey? Here's what we're doing. Um. You know, we're updating our comprehensive plan and we would love to hear from you. And I got um some people were, you know. Uh voiced the need for housing. Um other people were really interested in like new restaurants and. You know, those kinds of things. Um there were some people that, you know, it was just kind of like bringing up issues that, you know. The town can't really fix. It so you but you just you like you're gonna run the gamut of people that just kind of like. Go off on a tangent because they have a captive audience. Um so I got a little bit of that. Um but I did speak with Ashton Beebe and um he is a a local resident who is um. Really, I I don't know what his exact role is with tourism and events. In like the Charlottesville area, but he is, he had a lot of great suggestions and ideas and he is in contact with a lot of folks. On the tourism board. Um so I told him that we would definitely love to have him come to um. And in a an event and, you know, a community engagement event. And and talk to us about some ideas for generating tourism in this town and events and getting people into town. So that was really great. And I think um he is in charge of like the rodeo in Fluvana. Um organizing that. So like he, I mean, he, they take courses through wineries and. All sorts of stuff around the area. So he's really big into events and tourism.
Also mentioned that the business roundtable were the A B C licenses. I mean, I brought it up, but it seems like those could be utilized to bring people for events. Uh you have the facilities, there wasn't any drawbacks mentioned on the facilities. It's mainly. Using those licenses, there would be personal power to to organize it.
I thi- I think we keep hearing that over and over again. Matthew Holt brought up the fact that, you know. We could hire a company who does that for a living and organizes events. And then we had someone tonight suggest hiring, taking the money that we would be putting towards sidewalks and things, not that we have that right now, but. Um hiring somebody to come in and and organize events and get communication. Where it should be with the town. Um yeah, I mean, I I just think like. That's how we should be looking at generating revenue in town. Besides, you know, taxing, increasing taxes. I don't think we should increase the taxes on the. The businesses.
Yeah, we had a question regarding, you know, meals tax and then uh, you know. How would that affect the business? Or are there other ways that the town can recruit its income? And uh I mean, Kristen's Sweetwater or.
Sweetwater.
Sweetwater. She uh it's later night. Uh she she, you know, has a, you know, her well rounded outlook on this from Bates copyright. Um. And uh yeah, she thinks that when the the meals tax increased, there was a little sticker shock, but mainly because of the change. That's what she said. But it's the overall cost, if people could stop eating out as much or coming to town. And then if there's a real estate town tax, then that would also affect businesses in a different way. Her main concern right now is inflation, the inflation of uh basic goods. So she's trying to raise her prices and then she's. She wouldn't even pay coffee, you know, for the pressure she's charging someone. So. Yeah, so that's, I know it's a challenge. So uh yeah, it's. That tha- that's the business community's outlook, right?
Yeah.
Okay, uh just to take us back to the slide, any other major stakeholders that are missing? Um. You know, we haven't really engaged specifically with the organization with directly with the museum. Um that's been on my mind. Uh is that a a big need of? For instance, tonight, uh the business committee was talking about, hey, why not having uh. You know, plaques on the buildings to incentivize a walking tour. The museum is updating their walking guide. It's been very popular. So there could be more partnerships there. So maybe in terms of business community, you know, our our recommendations and strategies could be more about partnerships and working together. You know, example, like more plaques around for history nerds to to walk around and spend more money, right? Uh that could be an example.
Look, Lincoln, this is a question I haven't thought about before. Some of this might be some demographics you might already know. If we happen to know either in town or near town, how many middle school, high school, college age? Young people there are. Is there any demographic lists of that?
Well, we could potentially uh find that by census tracts or zip code.
The reason, the reason I'm asking, I mean, obviously we're fine for the future is more in a, this might sound. Too simplistic, but it'd be interesting to have, like, have. Have, have uh have governments before to young people and said, what do you think? You know, maybe if you're middle school, high school, college kid, what? In other words, a younger version of what we're doing. I'm not saying that's gonna get you millions more responsive, but it is interesting. Part of. What you wanna do is have a young person buy in, the community will understand what's happening and. Get their opinions and their thoughts and way to do that.
That's so crazy, yeah. You totally should have a focus group for the new. So why didn't we think of that sooner? But we.
We can engage, we can engage boys and girls clubs.
Boys and girls club or I mean Scottsville Elementary, we could. Go there and, you know, meet with the class. I mean, I'm sure you all know local teachers, right? It's just a question of, yeah, how much of this is gonna place on that versus other other things.
I will say one thing that another thing that I heard when I was talking to people is people want more things for families and kids. In town, um like a splash park and skate park, that kind of stuff. So.
Lincoln, just to follow up on that, but I'm not so much saying that we. Their voice is not something we haven't somehow bought here, but it's more trying to figure out a way, how do we invite it in? Process, how do we, how do we invite them to engage? And I I will say that in a. Simple, I I teach a couple of classes in Charlottesville, the homeschool kid, I've been doing it for nineteen years and we recently had a family event. A few weeks ago with my kids were there and four of them took one of my classes and I said, what do you, what do you remember years later? What would you do differently? And. Not an interesting engagement with them about that all of them grew up in Scottsville and. All of them got their first jobs here. And I mentioned that just to say, or Scott or Josh Peck, who served on the. Council within various other ways was a young person who grew up in town. And I'm saying more recent years, there's obviously people done it long ago. But ways that we open the doors to them, you know, maybe.
Yeah, I think we could have a focus group at the Boys and Girls Club while they're there for the after school program. I'm sure that they would, they would, you know, and people, the kids could just sign up like they do for field trips if they're interested in. I'm gonna talk to some town representatives about the town where they live.
I will be clear, we are really coming at a finish line.
Okay.
With feasibility. The only thing I could think of is switching if it feels like a priority.
Yeah.
Switching something and asking, um I'm sorry to do that, but we've.
Yeah.
Been limited in a.
Yeah.
Very specific way into how much we can work into this co-plan.
Right.
Um the only thing I could think of is, does this feel like something that you would substitute? The plan we had, an element from the plan we had months ago.
I was gonna ask, what are the remaining workshops?
These are our main events that we publicize all the way. Um but you know, another option is. We could brainstorm a a simple activity and then maybe two, two uh commissioners could go to Boys and Girls Club with our. Different materials and just do a sticker exercise. That could be really useful. I could brainstorm some questions for you. You can just go and implement it.
Well, it will, another, that that could be, the other thing I was gonna say is if you look at that already on the meeting meeting. It could be that there's a small part of that meeting that actually spoke this way. Um. I, this is gonna sound dumb, but there's this Pat Saturday was youth funding day in Virginia. Someone I was talking to, she had my class, it was youth funding day and.
Wow.
There were two girls in my class that one had a beer this weekend, one living good. I I mean, I was like, I just knew you'd be. Anyways, it was just, uh my my point was they were happy to tell me their stories of being out hunting and I was. I was like, and it was the girls, so normally you would think steroids, it might be the other way around. So I'm just saying, if maybe there's a a short set, maybe there's a few minutes, like if there, it could be, it could say. You know, we encourage young people also to come to that. It's a community and so open to everybody. Maybe there's a. Uh maybe even the first fifteen minutes are, I don't know, if you're a young person, we'd like to get your thoughts, but you know, just.
Yeah.
And I and I think that's great if you have it like the first fifteen minutes that way the kids can get their say and if parents wanna be right on heels of that. And then get them home to do whatever. And and it's like a kid's corner, like literally you can find a station and yeah, make it corporate by the end.
Yeah.
And I also, I like the idea of doing that, the Boys and Girls Club, because they're there and they're a captive audience and you're guaranteed they have a boost of key participants. But I also really like the idea of bringing them in here.
Right.
So they can actually, you know, create, yeah. I mean, I have a lot of memories from when I was a kid and my mom was involved in all sorts of things. And going to those places where I was like one of the only kids and feeling like. Do I belong here or not? And you know, let's let them know that they do belong here.
Yeah, I like it.
I think that'd be really exciting for kids to come here and experience the council chambers. And prevent, present civicness against them.
So are we doing two Saturdays? I kinda like that idea.
I I would say I did hear from people at the soccer games on Saturday that one uh. One of the ladies was like, I'd really like to participate, but I have soccer like. Cause every morning and I was like, oh, but the, you know, it's at ten thirty. She's like, yeah, but I have an older kid who does the U eighteen. Up at the field.
First weekend in November or something.
It does, but if we wanted to get, you know, make one of those, you know, we could keep ten thirty to twelve thirty, but maybe make one of them like. A little bit later in the day, just to, I don't know if we'd get any more people or not, but.
And then just the question of this community meeting, maybe it's it's supposed to be kind of the umbrella cover all. We have to practice our presentation. It is in my mind, not me speaking as much, but it's really sharing, sharing uh the mountains, I guess we could say. And would it be better to have one meeting or having two meetings at different times to catch more people? That's that's really the question. Yeah.
How many people are we catching though? It seems like we're not getting very many people. And then half of us that show up are already on planning commission or town council. So we're hearing from like two or three people that.
I think the the event we had on Saturday uh about enabling growth uh. You know, we had our, we've had our typical people come like Nancy Gill, she was busy and, you know, I think those people had, they just. I guess it felt like their voices have been heard.
Yeah.
And they enjoyed, I think, the first two or three seconds, but. Yeah, um we need to find ways to better communicate and advertise. We've we've been trying. Uh. So it's a question of how many people are gonna come? That that's excellent because. So it's the question of how many people are gonna come, that, that's excellent, because for instance, tire factory, I, I wasn't here, but I heard there was seventy or eighty people. But that's of course a hot, hot topic issue, so.
I can totally advertise and spread the word that everything's very controversial.
And and one, one positive thing might be that the people have already come and they're like, oh, this is actually great. We don't need to go anymore, cause we think it's on track, maybe that's a positive piece of feedback.
Yeah. I had one guy ask me if the tire factory had been killed, so he didn't even know on Saturday, I was like, yeah. He's like, okay, well, housing is my main concern, so I guess that's dead.
Well, I don't know that the tire factory is dead, you know what I mean, I think it's an ongoing conversation.
I said that, I told him, I was like, that project specifically is dead, yes.
So, so Javier said he might be able to stretch a little bit of money for some refreshments at a community meeting. That could be a, a draw for some people. Yeah, we could bring people from the, the, the market directly up here.
I just, I really think like we need a table and we need a few of us to be down there at the market. I do not know why we haven't been down there, like every weekend.
So, so if we do one of these events on Saturday at like. Generally after the market crowd, then we can come directly up here.
Or do it down at the market, like, do we have to do it here?
If we, we have our little sound system on, there's an insider here, yeah.
We can do it down there.
It's a little shaded, so we bring our projector, I'd be really excited.
I mean, do we need a PowerPoint presentation though? Like, we just, why wouldn't we just have a conversation with people? With, you know, with questions and of, you know.
It's.
A flipboard.
Question, what do you want this umbrella conversation to be, it's, it, this, we have several people there. Wanna give an overview of each aspect of the comp plan or what have you heard so far?
I don't, I think people just wanna know, like, we're updating our comprehensive plan, here's what a comprehensive plan is. And then just like get into the, the meat of the housing focus, mobility.
To, this is another place you could ask, is the Twilight Tours that are about to happen. Maybe the museum would allow just a table to be right there in the museum, we said. I'm a team part of that, but when, that's a big draw, I mean, that's a, that's a, and it's also the time where. People are kinda coming and going, so it could be, that, that could be helpful. If there was, if we got, the museum would probably say yes, if you set up, like if somebody who's there sitting there, just the exit.
What would we be doing, talking to people?
Well, groups are coming and going, and if this would be, either, going back to this, it would be. The specific focus would be which one of these, uh correct, like, right, it would be one of these ones that you would come.
Yeah, the uh.
Walkability?
May- maybe.
More walking.
Yeah, maybe we can back into focus groups, so the intention of the focus groups, as I have gathered is. Instead of having a, a table here, we have more of like everyone in a, in a round circle. They would ask more targeted questions. The, the workshops have been generally just prompted based on very open questions, what do you think about this? And then people start talking, and I, we just start writing things down then. And the spread rights, but the focus groups, they have to be more targeted, because I think that's the purpose, we've been wanting more targeted feedback. So when we ask the question, uh. For instance, about, first question about housing, we, we get people's feedback, and it might not be positive feedback. But we have to gauge what, what we're actually proposing, and weigh that with these, this feedback, yeah. And then the purpose of it, these, the, that, community meetings, uh, cannot really. Have a focus on receiving information, it's more like giving information and hearing people's last words.
And and that's easier to do when you're doing it all at once, when you're delivering it all at once, unless you have hostess. Could verbally being able to tell that to individuals multiple times as they come and go, that's really hard to accomplish.
So I, I would think a PowerPoint presentation would be better, because it's, it's concise information, but we're not. It makes things messages, we don't wanna say that, hey, we're promoting a lot of group. But the next person, we can give a different story.
I was just checking, cause I was trying to check my dates, but so the twenty, the twentieth and the twenty-first are the two days of the Twilight Tours. So, so that, that twenty-first date. Um, if it were, again, I'm not saying active, but it's, there will be a concentration of people over that direction. Um, if we wanted to do something, we may not want to, but it's that.
About a table with just an agenda, saying, hey, you know, this is what we're doing, you're invited to come. Let people know.
Yeah.
To let people know that it's, yeah, that being useful, yeah. Yeah, I just remember that I was, I was having to, my voice and everything. Um during the Twilight Tours, because there were so many uh presentations right there at the museum, you know. It was, it would be hard to have a group of people talking about something while the tours were getting started and stuff. That was my only thought.
Well, last year, I mean, I went to the museum, gave my tour, people kind of come there and. You know, you know, different groups to start their tour, right, and it's kind of dark outside with the candles. And inside it gets a little bit busy, then the tour leaves and it's empty. So there's not a lot of room there, yeah, that could be. But we could have a tour at the check, a, a, a table, you know, there's the check-in table there outside, right? We could have a poster or something there, even though we could print off something a little bigger. But a lot of those people for the Twilight Tours, are they out of towners or they?
I don't know exactly, but there's a lot of local people that are.
You know, on, that October twenty.
Yeah, yeah, if we can get some sort of bulletin board, like a, a board like that to advertise the upcoming focus groups. And the community meetings and have that posted at the farmer's market every Saturday. And have that posted maybe out front downstairs on the days that it's not new or just have multiple posters going. That's one more way to get to it now. Do we use this kiosk thingy or whatever it is, uh message board out front?
The. Yeah.
In parking lot up there.
Yeah, I'll.
Yeah.
Posters in public notice.
Just wondering, you know, those are an opportunity, um, to.
So these events are down there already, yeah.
Uh, the board?
Yeah.
Okay, cause I frankly had not looked at it recently, it's always energy.
And the survey was there.
And now I should, so I would do that, but um anyway, just like.
But I think it's a great idea, well, I'll just, I'll quickly put some text on a, a twenty-four by thirty-six inch. Piece of paper, I'll print it off it, uh of the UVA that uh will now. Okay, great.
So then I think we should probably talk in more depth about the community meeting and what format that's taking and what different, how to do that, but I don't. I think you probably need time to prepare.
Yeah, I need, I need some more thing, but.
Do you wanna have a small group?
We have a small, two persons session, yeah. Um, yeah. So that's on the fourteen, so maybe, um. It's based Monday, so uh. Maybe this coming Friday or Saturday, I could talk to two of you, that'd be okay, just for. Fifteen thirty minutes, I think that'd be really helpful to get feedback. On what we're really thinking about for those, those events.
For the last event.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, well, I don't know, questions to these, and then also, uh. For the community meeting, yeah. I mean, for the community meeting, I, I really see us maybe showing the meeting diagram and then talking about each element and. Maybe one slide for each element, so we talked about enabling growth here, the, the highlights of that. So it'd be mainly, uh, you know, maybe one kind of commissioner that attended that workshop will kind of give an overview of. We talked about the balancing act of like, for instance, enabling growth, uh that, that we heard about on Saturday. So and so forth, um, just to make sure people hear that, you know, we're not. We've been listening to them and uh we've been considering what they're saying, it's not all top down. And we can weave in different insights, even though we might not wanna mention people's names, so we can say, oh, we heard a really good piece of feedback from, uh. The business roundtable that maybe it's not, not short of the parking, but it's made in signage and wayfinding, that's. Just to let people know, the business community know that we've heard from some people, subset of them, that, you know, we can focus on. Okay, so that's the, I'll just email you to, to get two volunteers. Okay, so, um, in terms of the dates, what, do we wanna, um. Decide on the meeting dates now? I think first question, do we have one, one meeting or multiple meetings? Two, two meetings, two meetings, yeah.
We do like one on a Friday and one on a Saturday, like a Friday evening and a Saturday during the day, or maybe a Saturday and a Sunday. Or we do Saturday, but in the morning and Monday afternoon.
Maybe a weekday night and a Saturday. It's just, we're just trying to catch as many people as possible, so for instance, our first relating character workshop, that was on a weekday night, right? Yeah, it's either one year, two, that was pretty lively. But then a lot of those people couldn't join on Saturdays, um, I remember, so, yeah. Uh again, it's up, it's up to you, whatever you think the feeling is.
I, a weekday for the, I remember it started and then follow up, it was Saturday.
Okay.
I don't know what you all think.
And I'd probably go with what Shannon said, if it's gonna be in that October, like. One, first, at least do something in the afternoon, so it allows for the people to miss the soccer stuff, that's even.
Yeah, or switch the housing focus group to sometime during that week, but make it a weeknight. Again, like I, I feel like most of our focus groups have been on Saturdays. So far.
Yeah, the, these have already been advertised, so I.
Oh, okay.
We don't.
Yeah, never mind then.
We don't change it, cause then we create more confusion, but.
Okay.
Last thing, we tried a lot.
This is the only one that hasn't been scheduled, always, always, we said early November. And I know eighteen November is not early November, but if we wanna have two of them.
And November eleventh is um Veterans Day, is that a good problem?
Well, it depends, I, you think a lot of people would be free on a holiday like that or, yeah. So maybe, you know, I don't have my calendar handy, but. Maybe like if it was like, we can propose some weekdays and uh we can, we can, missing, missing Veterans Day.
Yeah, but I think you're, then you're bumping up, so Thanksgiving.
We can be given that one stay, I don't think that's gonna negatively affect you, I can't do the eighteen, but that's okay, I don't have to be there.
And, yeah, just to mention, that, that's a good point, um, you'd be ideal that we have. Almost everyone there, if they're able to come, which would mean we would have a forum. So we might have to make this an official meeting, a special meeting. But I think it would be worthwhile to have as many people as possible, including town council. To kind of show a, you know, a unified approach, even though that not everyone might not, not agree with everything, but. That'd be ideal in my mind in terms of showing, you know, uniform and G and who we sit in this.
Well, I would love to be there, but I'm not able to.
I understand, it's also my birthday on eighteen, but I don't want to.
What day of the week is, are those, are the, is that a Saturday or?
Even, even if it's two Saturdays, but.
Saturday, okay.
I think, may, maybe a thought would be, with this work happening, if we, if we were kicking back on one of the two town council meeting nights, like sometimes we've doubled up on the meeting. So it actually comes in, and it's on top of the town council.
Yeah, would you wanna do it earlier?
Uh, so my, my thought would be, maybe on this one between the chair and the mayor. Uh, confer and see if we propose, cause I think that might be a good way to get. To get more, whether, it could, it could also be the, the kind of commission days, it could also be a meeting next month.
Yeah, why not?
Um, just to mention that, the, the pandemic issue next month, I can't come on that Monday. I've got class, this Monday, there's no class, so.
So, yeah, can we, can we take a?
Maybe the work.
Cause we, maybe that time is done, multiple, like, so maybe what we could do is check the, in November, one of those two meetings.
Honestly, I think if we kick dates out of a hat, it'll be, we'll get the same attendance. We just have to advertise it.
More about advertising.
We have to really push it and everyone, single one of us should make an effort to notify people in our network and groups that we're affiliated with and try to get the word out that way.
I suggest help with that, I, one Saturday and people who showed up today were the people that I talked to on last Saturday around town. Um, so any engagement from specially appointed or elected officials, always help with that, people like to feel like they're being noticed.
I nominate you to attend this meeting.
For your meeting.
Yeah, where can we nominate you?
Okay, so, uh.
We have five minutes.
Okay, progressing with that, not bad, tech, I think the easiest thing to work on tech while we finish up these. Community events is to, I can email pieces of a word document around, then maybe two people can. And uh confirm the text, so, so the challenge of the text is, you know. I've experienced a lot in town, but I don't know a lot of history, so, for instance, Victory Hall, there's a whole page on Victory Hall. But some of the other stuff is a little bit old on Victory House, so I, I asked Nancy Gill, can you double check this Victory Hall text, yeah? So, um, so Victory Hall is, for instance, a box story. And unfortunately, I can write a principal of those text, so I, I think Javier and I are gonna try to tackle that together. And, um. So we just have to sit down and brain down basically, and write two to three paragraphs on our key terms, like enabling growth. Retaining small town character, so and so forth, yeah.
Javier, would you not see, uh, would it not be found also on a couple of grant applications for things in the past, we have to say some of the same stuff. There's probably some of it written out there, I know one that we did like five minutes, able to say some of these things, but. Not, maybe not exactly the same points, but my thought is not to duplicate effort, it's already there.
I can look through that, that's actually a really good idea, thank you.
Sure.
We'll stay with some, yeah, I'll look through stuff and, yeah, maybe I'll use OneDrive. And you're fine, yeah, you can convince it. So the, the idea of using the small word documents is not to look at a seventy-page document, but to look at a one-page document, so it's not overwhelming. And it's not that we're crafting a lot of this from scratch, I mean, I think that's a lot of goals of, like, crafting from scratch, but. A lot of its others that is already existing, um, we, it's just gonna be updated. So it's more of a verification on behalf of the, the, any commissioners, and just, cause you, you know the history of. Some of you might know the history longer than others, like Javier and I.
So are you just gonna assign us, like? I would need, Shannon, I need you to update the text on Van Cleef and the.
Yeah, okay, for instance, Van Cleef, I think I've already updated that text, but I.
Okay.
Like, you know, something I missed or something that, oh, that's old, that, that, that was demolished, it's something pretty obvious stuff, you're.
Okay, so.
Since there's a Victory Hall fundraising committee mentioned in the book, the text, these are still such a thing, we don't, we don't wanna have. Stale stuff like that, it turns on people.
So you're just gonna assign us, are we just double checking or do you want us to rewrite?
Uh, mainly double checking, but I think if there's anything that's missing or wrong, you can just. You know, delete the sentence and rewrite, you know, stuff like that.
Okay.
Just to approach it in a piecemeal way, we're not looking at seventy pages all at once, we're just gonna do one page here, one page there, and it'll be easy.
Great.
Not overwhelming.
And is track changes the default or do we actually have to go and click some buttons to make that happen?
So hopefully what I'm, I'm gonna do when I'm sending you the word doc, it'll be default, um, so. I'm pretty sure I can make that happen, I, I've done that before many times, but I'll double check.
And you're, are you gonna email that out this week?
Uh, no, I, I think the priority for me is getting those events up and running.
Okay.
So once those events become a little clearer, then we'll. So once those events become a little clearer, then we'll dive into the text more.
Okay.
So that'll be more towards latter part of October.
Okay, great.
Okay, so, uh, wanna continue on very quickly with urban development area designation, uh, this is potential. But we've been consulting some agencies. So what happened is we talked to Virginia Housing, and they sent us some materials on urban development areas, house, so. What was it looking, they caught my eye, and they said, there's a dot at Scottville for existing urban development areas. And this is from the Virginia Office of the Secretary of Transportation. This was a PowerPoint from twenty seventeen, so this, right down to existing urban development area. That's possible. Then I, I was interested, so I went to this website, so OPI, uh, basically the Virginia. Transportation Planning Department, it's somewhat separate from VDOT. But they have a website that basically has, you know, a map of different types of transportation phase, and you can see urban development area. In the Fluvanna side of Scottsville, it's even called Scottville Urban Development Area created in two thousand nine. So what I think is that, uh. Uh, Fluvanna created this community planning area, remember the pink area that they had in their, their zone, uh, in their compound? They, they quietly, uh. Called it an urban development area, and they could be leveraging it for grants. I don't think they have been, but they could be. Cause they have these other urban development areas, like Cacicello, you know, up at the interstate, so on and so forth, Gulf Union. So, uh, we're having a, another meeting with the Fluvanna, uh, planning director soon, he's finally offered some dates, um. So this is one thing to better understand, because. The way that an urban development area works in town has first arrived in the usual, it's the town that decides. But if you're a town like Dillon, Dillon, from what we understand from this Carter, Dillon wasn't able to do general content, they didn't have enough capacity or money. So Dillon said, hey, county Buckingham, this car, please do the compound for us, in, in the whole county complex, right? So that's okay, Dillon said, yes, please do it for us, but in this set. We don't really have institutional knowledge yet. The, the county of Fluvanna asked the town, is an urban development area okay for you? So I think, uh, my recommendation would be, we consult with Fluvanna and, uh, get a, a, a clear indication of what this really is. Is it historic in the state from twenty, two thousand nine, I forgot the update? Or is this something that they're trying to do, uh, without the town's knowledge?
So that's that work?
Yeah. But what's interesting though is it's on the books in the, in the state context.
Yeah.
So we've been consulting, uh, different agencies over the last month, uh, so we had a second meeting with Virginia Housing. Uh, which, uh, I think was very fruitful, they offered a lot of case studies, uh, different grant opportunities.
Link, link, and just a quick question, did they say? That something that I, I recall from conversations, uh, pretty much dramatic need of apartments, dramatic need of houses, is that kind of what they say?
I wouldn't say the word dramatic, I'd say. Virginia as a whole has a huge housing deficiency, and we are, we are like, like Virginia as a whole.
But both for houses and apartments are, but.
Well, that's the challenge we're having, we don't really have statistics on that, we asked Congress Jets and Planning District Commission. And they don't have the data. Uh, we asked them to, to come down here and give us a short presentation, they said they don't have a PowerPoint. But even though they have two full times, now three full times housing people.
And one, one last question, Mauna. The, is it, what's the why? Is it because people are moving in? Is it, what, what's the why as to why it would be the shortage? Cause that's, that doesn't make, that doesn't make sense to me, in other words.
Population growth.
I, I know we got the growth, but at the same time, you would, there's a lot of building, so is it, is it in moving, or what is it that's happening?
Well, I think population growth, as the relevant Cooper Center, uh, University of Virginia has come out every year, uh. You know, Virginia is growing, Northern Virginia is actually not growing. Increasing, yeah. But, um, also there's a lot of aging housing stocks, so for instance, Mr. Kevin Quick's lot, that, that was a house that burned down. There's other houses or mobile homes that age and. Become decrepit and they're just not being updated, and this, yeah.
Yeah, there's regions of Virginia like that, like the term, like rural displacement. Like your roof just gets so old, and then you really can't go back at it to. Sometimes it's an aging place kind of question.
And then also, also we converted it to Airbnbs or other purposes, um. So overall, there's just not that new type of housing coming in that's suitable for a broad range of population. Sure, there's these townhouses on Southern Charlottesville area that you can buy for five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars. But a lot of people working as baristas here, and some who aren't gonna be like that, so it's, it's about. Housing choices, making everyone feel that they have an opportunity to move to somewhere.
And like Link said there, they discussed housing choices, like different kind of.
Not mows, I, uh. And, and these, these meetings we've been having, they've been inundating us with. Grant opportunities and different acronyms, but again, like we talked about this morning with them. Those are great, and you don't have the staff capacity to chase down these grant opportunities, you're gonna be. You can get a couple million dollars, but you really have to have a know-how, how also to say, oh, I can do this for this. Group of units that might be the grandest, uh, age base, like fifty-five and above. Or another group of units that you develop on the same complex might be for income-based AMI and so on and so forth, so this takes a lot of know. So on so forth, but we had this conversation with Bay Agent. Which is, uh, housing, not a nonprofit, and what, what's super interesting is they're working in northern that, uh. Plus the five towns.
Yeah.
They do transportation with housing. So it's like, um, a rural transportation system on demand. That they, they, it's, they're not, they're not making income off of this, but they're working at it with their aging in place housing. And other different, uh, business avenues within this nonprofit, they're, they're really able to provide a whole holistic package that is.
Yeah, Michael, thank you, that was the difference to you, Shannon, I'm sorry.
Yes, I know, we are five minutes beyond our schedule at this point.
But basically, uh, Bay Agent was really informative in the, uh, now we're gonna talk to the Pima Housing Alliance again. I mean, they're active in the community, but when they, no one's reached out to them, or they haven't, we haven't had that conversation. Um, and again, Thomas Jefferson, fighting this commission, the basic message was, uh, urban development area would not be interest, it could be positive through the grants. Is that a good summation, um, Lisa, of the conversation, I guess?
Um, yeah, I didn't really get a whole lot from it, to be honest, it was not super.
Yeah. They, they talked a lot about VDOT and other opportunities, but again. Purpose of a digital urban development area would be to get VDOT grants like the GAT grants.
They did say that the PUD could be used as a tool, um, if we wanted to do a PUD. A tool to get what we want and what we need.
Yeah. They didn't need a lot of know-how to do all this, and they, they were gonna help on the PUD previously, and, yeah.
And they, yeah, they talked about grants, um, but, but, um, Dan, just to backtrack one second, that explanation for why we have it. Is really important for us to nail down, cause when we have that focus group, that's gonna come up. You know, some people are gonna say, why, you know, and, and the personas will be helpful for that. But yeah, it was more important to nail that down.
I think it's also important, I still, you know, people keep saying they want affordable housing, but what does that mean, and how do you get it?
I know there was a lot, there was a lot of controversy and voices about, uh, when we, when we did, uh. Apartments and all that stuff, but one of the things that I had not realized until that was, I said, to me, I wouldn't use the term dramatic, but in other words. There was this dirt of housing, and it, we heard, I forget who there were, several different. People who were resources in the area of apartments, and they all said, yeah, across the board, we're lacking apartments, and they have lots of data, and it was. I just didn't realize it was to the level that, I just thought it was like they just didn't have, I didn't realize it was. And it's not just here, like all across Virginia, but it's, it's all.
Like this morning, we talked about what, like, a third of. Young, uh, college bound or out are living at home, and that's an affordability question. I think the first thing you do, leaving out of college, in the US, is try to get a little bit further away.
Yeah. So that's, that's a good point, we can, I, I, living at home, yeah. And also, uh, we talked this morning about keeping people in the community, because if you can't. Stay here your whole life if you want to. Scottville has a gap in there, you know, of a coming community, the young people you mentioned. Okay, um, so last, last slide, uh, we've got a regular meeting on the sixth, I, I won't be able to attend, uh, until after. Seven thirty, I tune in on Zoom, but, um.
So we'll have the minutes and the agents down by then.
Yeah. Then we have these events, uh, so I'll communicate by email about early November, those two, those two events, we're gonna be connected. Okay, well, this has been a really quick, it's only eight twenty-two, this is the earliest meeting in a long time, yeah.
It's over a year, at least, I'm not kidding, it gets, that's good.
So, I would like us to think about. Questions for the focus group, so each of us can participate and give you some feedback, so give us some pointers for. It shouldn't be just a, a question like, who needs housing, but it should be a more provocative question, something to get people thinking and talking. So let's spend some time thinking about those two topics, wealthability and housing. And each of us make an effort to get the two questions, so like, in on those two groups.
I mean, could it be stuff like for housing, like what does affordable housing mean to you? Like, what does that look like?
And we established that there is a difference between, uh, affordable and low cost or low income.
I don't know, is there?
We can also do more survey that day, like, we could have a questionnaire, if we decide that. We got enough information from the survey, but maybe we need more information, like what does affordable mean to you?
Right.
Then we could, uh, work to get more information from people at that meeting and quickly compile the results.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, if, if affordable is affordable for the region that you're in, and that median income is fifty-five thousand per household. Then, yeah, that's low income housing, I would say, I don't know.
From the survey, what people think affordable is for them, we, they, we asked them what they were looking, what budget they had.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to see.
The housing statistics in our region is, uh, Scottsville is closer with Charlottesville in terms of housing price.
Yeah.
So it's difficult to read out Scottsville compared to Charlotteville, so.
Right, can we get the, um, the answers to the survey?
Yeah, so.
Questions.
Tell you all those survey things, probably tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Package that, if you can go in and read, it's very interesting, especially the comments, very much questions, anything else to share. Um, so, yeah, please take a look at those.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, um, so that's, that's, that's all, yeah.
If you wanna keep the, uh, to-go tags, music for another event, you hold on to the, um. The questionnaire from then, if that feels easier, uh, for both of you, but we can talk about that, uh, later.
Okay.
Because we talked about the survey being done, right?
Yes, but what Lisa mentioned, maybe you could have some kind of survey on the, the community meetings or focus group, if you wanted to. But that survey is not yet.
I'll bring that back to you, and if I need it for anything, you can get back to me.
So just to let you know, if someone scans a QR code for the survey, there's a message that says, thank you very much for, the survey's closed. If you ever have any questions about a complex, call the town office.
As long as it doesn't say, oh, I'm.
It doesn't, yeah. It shouldn't say that, yeah.
Does it have the date that it closed? Cause I don't want people to think, what, she gave me this link like yesterday, why doesn't it work today?
I think it had a date, yeah.
I know, I don't want people to be like, really, this is Jeff, the town in Scottsville. Yes, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Yeah, that seems all right, all up here.
Hi.
Thank you.